Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending tonight's council meeting, the first meeting in July. At this time, I would ask that Councilman Felix Gines say the prayer, and following that, Mr. Jerry Creel will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Gines.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, give of all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord. Thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you, oh Lord, for giving us this opportunity. We thank you for the leadership that we have. We thank you for all what you've done for us. Thank you, Lord, for our United States. We're coming up on this, 4th of July. We thank you for blessing our city, our leadership, and our council members. And we ask all, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Thank you, Mr. Creel. This time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? That's a 4-0 vote for the clerk. All right, if the clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5O, resolution authorizing execution of a release of all claims to the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for Point Cadet Marina improvements.
Thank you, Carrie. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. By Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? That's a 4-0 vote for the clerk. All right, that brings us to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome everyone to our July meeting, and hope for the next few days will be exciting. We've got Boom Boom Committee ready to do some fireworks Thursday, and we look forward to it. But as far as my report, I'd like to ask you to spread the expenses of Biloxi Travel Credit Card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
We'll do that for you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no departmental reports. It brings us to council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Yes, speaking of the Boom Boom Committee, we went to the little reception ahead, and they're going to be the second-largest shoot in the southeastern part of the United States. About forty, forty-five thousand dollars worth of fireworks. So they all can celebrate a lot of force in a good way. Light up the stars. So that's a good thing. I saw in that Supreme Court ruling where they upheld a thing about the tents. You can't live in the tents. They have the right to remove them. Does that affect anything we can get done in the city of Biloxi? The Supreme Court did that.
I'm not sure.
Oregon. That was Oregon.
Peter needs to give us a... What the specifics of that is. Is that... I know the case was before the Supreme Court.
They were there on the other day. That was Oregon.
Okay.
They knew that you have the right to move them.
On public property.
So that's what I was just saying.
On public property. In a park. I think that was in a city park of Oregon.
Anytime, city property, stuff like that.
I'll catch up on that opinion. I'll report back to you.
Because we definitely want to keep Biloxi clean, as far as that concerned, the homeless. And I remember at the MML convention, and we had probably four thousand people attended that, a lot of them across the state. So that's why we tell them, Fofo and everybody, we need to keep our city looking spick and span. You know, we're coming in the 4th of July, holiday time. I went down to Point, the splash pad down there was all shut down. They said something with electrical parts. I told Fofo about that, to see if we could look at that, get that done, because you've got to have that thing off and running. It's a long weekend for people coming down here for vacations and that. So stuff like that needs to be running. Bathroom needs to be open. Just not that one. Talk all the folks. So I just want to make sure we stay on top of that, get that done. I'd like to say, I thought they did a good job with the bridge on Bayview, where they put them little separating poles in it, where you can walk alongside the bridge in it. All we've got to do is finish out that and get the concrete sidewalk. That way you can walk all the way to the Imperial Palace. But it looks good. Separates them from getting out of traffic. So I thought that worked out pretty good. So... And everybody had luck. Have a great 4th of July. Be happy. Cook the hot dogs and hamburgers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gines?
Yes, I just want to make sure everybody have a wonderful and safe 4th of July weekend. Happy Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shoemaker?
Just two things. Regarding the Mercy Cross, the homeless at the Mercy Cross, do we know if anything is tracked regarding if any of them are veterans, military veterans or not, or is that something that we have no way to track with them?
You're talking about Mercy Cross?
Mercy Cross, yes, sir.
They're aware of that there's a definite path for veterans in those kinds of situations, but I don't know the answer to how many.
So, and I didn't know if we know, but...
Do you have, you know, the names and some IDs for those people who are on Mercy Cross?
They're military vets?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. And lastly, happy 4th, everybody. Hope the weather's good. Get out and enjoy it. And I have to say it, ditches, culverts, drainage, and grass cutting. I think they were cutting grass today in Wool Market. I didn't see them, but I heard from several people they were cutting. So hopefully, they'll get some decent weather and some time to cut some. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. If they're cutting too many ditches, you want me to slow them down? If I understand correctly, Mayor, our first budget workshop is going to follow our next council meeting on July 16th. I believe it's going to focus on revenue. I say that for the benefit of the council and anybody out there who wants to follow along with those workshops, which are open to the public and are recorded for anybody who wants to view those budget workshops or view the council meetings. Also, I just want to remind the mayor and the CAO, Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Leonard, I've sent y'all an email with all the handouts from the previous employee pay workshops and a budget planning form that I think would be very helpful to you. Trying to share my experience to help make life easier for you.
Good.
Thank you. All right. I hope everybody has a safe 4th of July with family and friends. Having said that, we'll move on to the public agenda.
Did I say something?
Sure, George.
I want to bring this up. Did you see where there's only four? Thank goodness we've got Shoemaker elected. We wouldn't have a meeting. Think about that. We have two bills out of town, you know? We're waiting on another one to get elected. And also, like, a fellow councilwoman, Arlene Wall, sitting out in the audience. We'd have had to pull her up here to make four.
She could do the job now. She could do the job. All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Having said that, we'll move on to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. Be sure, if you've not already signed in prior to the meeting, there's a sign-in sheet here at this table. When you come to the table, when you're recognized, come to the table. Sit close to the mic, but not too close. What about here? Otherwise, the people at home who view this later won't be able to hear what you're saying. That being said, when you come to the table, just state your name so the clerk can record it. Be sure, if you've not signed in, that you sign in, and then you'll have three minutes for your comments. Okay? Having said that, is anybody on your right, my left? Ms. Wall?
Hello. My name is Arlene Wall. I reside at 2668 Beach Boulevard, Unit 1903. Come and see me sometime. I live in a wonderful building, Bellevue Condos, and we're across the street from the motel on Walmart Drive that had a gruesome murder. It has been sitting there. It had a contractor come in, and he did some work, and then everything just stopped. It's had homeless people. From the time the motel's shut down, the swimming pool has never been cleaned. I'm waiting for a body to float to the top. It's just black. We had graffiti and writing on the walls and a large contingency of residents that weren't paying rent, coming and going. And in the storage building, people living in there, trash all over, high grass. It's just... I've driven Paul crazy. I've called him weekly.
We've gotten to be good friends.
We were before. So that's it. I'm begging you to do something with that. The properties in my building range from 350,000 to a million point five. So you have 112 occupants there, families. One-third of them are owner occupied, one-third are second homes, and one-third are long-term rentals that pay a sizable sum. So we need to have a nice view, and we don't need to be looking at that and calling the police if we see vagrants and so forth. So anything you can do to help us, that would be good.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, for the benefit of anybody out there. This is a code enforcement matter that will be dealt with or addressed later in the meeting, is what Ms. Wall's referring to. Is anybody else on my left, your right, that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Tara Kivat Morgan, and I manage the Margaret Sherry Library at 2141 Popsbury Road. And I'm very pleased to announce that the Harrison County Library System has been awarded a community challenge grant from AARP for 2024. This grant will enable us to provide rolling walkers for the Margaret Sherry Library, the West Biloxi Library, and the Jerry Lawrence Library. These are for seniors to navigate the libraries independently and at their own pace. New chairs will be added at the West Biloxi Library to increase seating for seniors to pause while they browse. In addition, we will expand the large print collection to provide more reading choices for seniors and visually impaired. And we look forward to implementing these initiatives in a meaningful and impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Anybody else on my left, your right, that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Bob Silvestro. I know a lot of people here. I live in the 181 Iris Street in the greater Biloxi subdivision. We have about 60 homes. First of all, everyone I've met from the city has been very helpful, from the mayor, chief, Jerry, to Katie, I think, that helped clean up the neighborhood. And I see a lot of meetings where people come forward, and our problem is the old golf course, north of the railroad tracks that used to be called Broad...
A water side course.
Course. Now, what's happening from us finding out, we are not million-dollar homes. We are people who've been there since Camille, or whatever that hurricane was. Working people, older people, a lot of veterans, they're afraid to come forward and speak out. But we've made friends with the homeless people that are there, and they're afraid to report some of the stuff that's happening to them. The police chief and everyone else has been very helpful, and it seems like the people that are at Mercy Cross have rules. And if you don't abide by them rules, you come to our neighborhood. So everyone has moved forward to... It took a month to get the trash removed on our street, piles. I had a meet with them, and they took care of it. They came, and it was hard because the garbage man would come by and say, "I'm going to get in trouble because there's no house address and garbage." And then the nice guy with the claw, he would say, "If I pick up household trash, we get in big trouble at the dump." So my question, my wife says I go all over the place, but my question is, we are working with Captain Morgan to start a neighborhood crime watch, and I'm sticking my neck out being up here. But there are neighbors who are concerned, but they're afraid. But my number-one question is, they picked up the trash, and today, the homeless people, I guess we're supposed to be thankful that they're taking it from the woods and bringing it to the area. My question is, I was understood that a man named Roy Anderson and Cotton Ford own that property. Why does a lady who's 70 years old in my neighborhood get in trouble if she can't cut her grass or dump her trash, but these multimillionaires, they don't get in any trouble? It's unbelievable what's going on in that woods. There's young kids cutting through that woods, and I can't guarantee it they don't... They tie the police officer's hands. With possible sex... There's stuff going on. So I'm just saying that there's 60 homes of working people in that neighborhood. The Back Bay Mission Gary has come to the neighborhood. I invited him. He's going to help people that are poor with grants to fix their roof. I just want everyone to know that it's a good neighborhood, and we could use some help. And if there's a multimillionaire in the neighborhood who can't take care of his trash, I don't know, sell it, seize it, or build on it. But I'll help in any way, but I can't keep picking it up.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro.
Thank you.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Nobody on this side. Anybody else on my right, your left, that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Rod Markovitz. I'm a resident at 2668 Beach Boulevard, the Bellevue condominiums that were mentioned earlier by Arlene Wall. I will be talking briefly about the Broadway Inn, which is a big concern as a resident of that area. But just quickly, in my background, I came from Mandeville, Louisiana, and I bought my first condo in 2020. I love the area. I thought it was an up-and-coming area. Excuse me. It's growing. It's pretty impressive, and I like what I saw. I bought a second one in 2021. I still own that as well. I bought another one in 2023 because I've made it my permanent home, and that's Unit 1904. I paid dues and taxes, and I'm okay with that. I also bought a commercial building in '23, this in Mr. Councilman Ward's district, or Councilman Tisdale's district, which is off the bays in Fernwood. I've invested in this area. I'm all within one-mile radius of my building. But across the street, I see the Broadway Inn in blight every day. I have gone up close and took pictures. I've been inside the building. I've tried to look at things, make sure there's no safety hazards. As mentioned earlier by Ms. Wall, the pool is a septic tank. It's very disgusting. Inside, people are using the building when they get inside as a facility to sleep as well as a bathroom. On a regular basis, the enclosures nearby are opened. There's trash. There's debris. Week after week, it's the same thing. I know I've written to Mr. Tisdale as well, Mr. Creel as well, and we do get responses. It seems like we'll get some kind of reaction a few days later, but then it goes another week or two weeks and a month longer, same situation. I'm asking, what can we do to make it go away? Is it more investment? What is it going to take? It should not be like this. And it's been a couple of years since, really, they started that destruction or the reconstruction of that facility. I think it was due to termites or some kind of infestation. Again, I really like the community. I've invested in the community. I'll do what I can to help the community, but somehow, I'm hoping that the council and the code enforcement will address this in a serious manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markovitz. Anybody else on my right, your left, that wishes to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Terry Craddock, and like two of the others that spoke before, I reside at 2668 Beach Boulevard, Bellevue. My unit is on the 12th floor, and guess what it overlooks? I've seen many, many things going on. It seemed like they were trying to refurbish it or tear it down, but it wasn't clear to me what they were actually trying to do. I don't know who owns it, but nevertheless, it's becoming a problem for the community. It's a site problem. It's also an issue for us that live in the neighborhood. There is a business right on the corner, The Pancake House, and all this doesn't need to continue. Somehow, people in your... I don't know who, but if it's in your court, need to stop it, tear it down, do away with it. It's not serving any purpose.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Craddock. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to speak? Anybody in the back? Did I miss anybody? All right, having said that, citizens' comments is closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. If the clerk will read the first item, Item A.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from RS5 High Density Single Family Residential to RM20 Medium Density Multi-Family Residential for 12105 Cedar Lake Road.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I'll motion.
Mr. Gines will make that motion.
We'll second it.
Mr. Shoemaker will second it. And this is a first reading, so this is a procedural reading. And we'll move on to the next item. If the clerk would read Item B, also a first reading.
Orders to amend the zoning district map for the establishment of a PDI planned development infield district master plan coupled with a preliminary subdivision for Coral Breeze located at 1654 Beach Boulevard.
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Gines. This also is a first reading, so this is procedural. That brings us to Item C, which is a second reading. If the clerk would read Item C, please.
Orders to grant a non-exclusive franchise to Unity Fiber Golf Co. to lay, construct, maintain, replace, repair, and operate fiber optic cable in the city of Biloxi.
Thank you, Carrie. The motion was made during the first reading by Mr. Lawrence and was seconded by Mr. Glavin, who's not present this evening. Mr. Lawrence?
Is this throughout the whole city? No, this is all fiber, right?
We've got a current franchise agreement with Southern Light, which is primarily in just a few areas in the Division Street and a few in the downtown area. And they are... They initially just wanted to renew it under this new name, and then they've come back and said, "We're going to use this entity for specific projects as needed in the city." And it's, you know, the exact areas, we don't know, but it's not going to be anything like a Seespire, just in as-needed installation of fiber.
So what areas you going to go to next? You said "as needed," so what is that supposed to mean?
It's more commercial fiber. Unity is one of the largest commercial fiber companies in the nation. And, I mean, we have two options. We could just let somebody come in, pay the permit fee, tear things up, and hope we can... Hope they do a good job. Or we have them under this franchise agreement where they pay the permit fee, they submit insurance to us, they submit a bond to us, and it basically puts them under our umbrella that if there are issues, we're able to hold them to the agreement.
What's that like downtown Biloxi? Has that been done, or we have to do that with this fiber downtown Biloxi?
If they decide to do it, they would come to us with that... with their plan and their permitting and still go through all the permit process. But this is to establish a franchise agreement so they don't have to come in every time and do this. And it allows for quarterly payments of a percentage of their fee off of telephones and other fees like that.
Sounds like a push contractor. You use them when you need them.
Right. Well, they're a profit business on their own. We've got a similar franchise agreement with Southern Light, with Seespire, Cable One, AT&amp;T. So it's just another... It's a franchise agreement, but they've got to have it really... We don't want people coming in doing one-off jobs. We want them coming in under our agreement with our... Submitting our insurance so that we make sure there's no issues.
Thank you. Mr. Gines, anything? Mr. Shoemaker, anything?
Anything.
Peter, so basically, are they cherry-picking which commercial areas they want to serve? It sounds like they are. They're not offering it to every business, or are they offering it in a particular area downtown? Or what about Pass Road, those commercial businesses down that way? Have we gotten that far with them yet?
No, I mean, they're not residential. We can't...
They're not private to the home, like we've seen in, you know, recently with AT&amp;T in different neighborhoods. I think there's trunk lines, just heavy-duty bandwidth that would get you from point to point. If we, for example, I'm not sure who we're using to tie 321 Division Street in fiber, that would be the kind of linkage that we would be asking them to run, either aerial, not so much underground, not subsurface.
Are they hanging anything on poles, or is it all underground?
No, I think it's aerial.
If it's aerial, I mean, if they're on our poles, we can charge them for that. Is that covered in this agreement, Peter? You know?
Well, they really would only be on Mississippi Powers poles if they were aerial. They don't really get on our city poles. They don't allow that. I think their existing business has been on Division Street. It was linking some of the doctors' clinics and the... Some of the clinics that were spread out along Division Street. They didn't really have a lot of territory.
Sounds like it's going to be quite a bit of bandwidth to these commercial customers. I believe that's what you were referring to, Mayor. So really, we don't have to worry about seeing this stuff in subdivisions?
I wouldn't think, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, and call for the question. All in favor is presented. That's a 4-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to the consent... Excuse me.
I'll move it.
Yeah, that brings us to the consent agenda. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Gines.
A couple of questions there. Peter, on E, is this the same bond we've been dealing with, the $5 million bond? Or is this another one? Could you have it $5 million on another page? So what we doing with these two bonds?
Yeah, this is... One of them is recognizing that the money has come in, and we're putting the money into the general fund. The other one is, if you recall, the building on Division Street that the police are moving into, we borrowed a small portion of that, or a portion of it, from the general fund while we were waiting on the bond to come in. So this is reimbursing the general fund.
The money you took...
Right.
And the two of them on... You have a Project 1066 Point Cadet, and you have a Project 1024, and they have... There's a twice on here. What... I see the memorandum of understanding. So why are there four of them on there? You got two 1066s, you got two 1024s. You got two 1066s, you got two 1024s. So what's the difference between them? What we doing to either one of them?
So 1066 is the Point Cadet shoreline. That's where the pavilion and the splash pad, it's that shoreline that we're doing some work on. And that's just an amendment to the MOU with DMR because we tweaked the scope of work a little bit. So it's just kind of a paperwork thing. Then 1024 is our project, the first phase of the Point Cadet Marina, our floating dock project. That's what that is. And this, for 1024, we're just doing the final change order and doing, this is just grant paperwork to close out that grant. Final payment to the contractor, final change order, and then grant paperwork.
On 1024, the floating docks, are we able to use that yet? Has that been approved completely by MIMAPM, whoever's supposed to be handling that?
Yeah, yeah, actually, that's kind of, yeah, they did have a couple of issues. That's kind of what this paperwork is, is clarifying some of the issues they have. But yes, we are able to use it.
Yeah, we expect to start renting July 10th, within a week or so. And I believe all the slips have been promised and asked for, and they're already ready to start renting those.
How many additional slips we actually added?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight slips.
How many?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, there's new slips on the flo, okay. I couldn't understand this one hit, this would be Resolution L. You recognize and fund received the settlement of a claim.
Yeah, it was a, I think, a driver of an M and M truck hit one of our vehicles, and we went through their insurance company, and they're paying for the property damage. So we-
You're collecting money from them.
Yeah, and we, I think, have to sign a release, so whenever we do those, we put those on.
Right. How about you, you got anything?
Mr. Guines, anything?
No.
Mr. Lawrence, anything else?
I think that's it.
I'll come back to you if I need to, George. Mr. Shoemaker?
Yeah, just a couple of things. W regarding the sunken shrimp boat and the removal. And I understand that, I mean, it sunk while it was at the harbor, but to get our money back from that, obviously, we're going to have to pay the $25,000. The owner, of course, isn't obviously paying that money. Is it really probable that we'll ever receive any money back from the owner?
Well, we, we've got a pending lawsuit for him already. We're pending to try to evict him. The guy was, I don't want to get into the particulars of his attitude, but let's just say he was not pleasant, and we're going to proceed. Now, whether it's collectible, we'll see. But I mean, he's-
What are you doing here?
Yeah, we're going to pursue that.
Okay, and, and this may be a stupid question. Do we, as the city, hold any liability for that boat sinking there? Only because we have harbor masters and people that are there, employees that are there 24 hours a day? Nothing that would affect the lawsuit, you're saying?
No, it's our information. When it came, it was not seaworthy, and he refused to move it or sign a lease. He just wanted, wanted to keep it there, and that's all part of the lawsuit, though.
Thank you. Last question, one more question. Regarding AA, the resolution amending the engineering department budget for the $20,000. Understand that's where the money's going and why we're moving that. I'm just curious, is that actual, is it for an employee that we have contracted out, we're paying, or?
Yes, so we have a contracted employee that basically reports to our office every day. And we, that's where we budgeted the money, was in personnel, because it's in place of some vacant positions that we have. And so that's why we're transferring that money back, because we, we've run out of money in that line item, so we're transferring more money.
So this person isn't a normal city, a regular city employee?
Correct, correct.
We're contracting this person because we can't fill this open positions?
Correct.
Is that a money issue, in your opinion?
Um-
A salary issue?
Yes, yes.
You would think, so basically-
We have a hard time getting engineers, yes.
For that, okay. Okay, so we're paying the $20,000 to contract, but if we were to hire somebody, we wouldn't need this contract employee?
Correct, correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Lawrence, anything?
I was going to ask, before you sit down. You're doing your calisthenics, you're doing right.
That's right, I need the steps, I need the steps, what you got?
This is a Z?
Yes.
I think that was supposed to be. Where we removing money from salary and wages to professional services.
Yeah, that's, that's to cover the contracted employee that we have in engineering. We budgeted, because he's there, because we have some vacant engineering positions, so the budget for that, to pay for that contract, was originally budgeted in personnel line item. And so now we've used our other professional services budget, so we're just transferring more money to continue that contract.
But was that listed as salaries before, or just money for the contract workers? That wouldn't be salaries, would it?
Well, the money was placed in salaries to hi, to hire somebody, but since we couldn't hire anybody, we're moving it into contract services to pay the bill.
I could say that, but I didn't realize that you called that salary.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's a contract working, that's different.
Yeah, yeah, that's how we budgeted at the beginning of the year, and just to kind of, I guess, keep up with what our actual salaries would be in the budget, and then we moved it. When we ran out of money for other professional services, we just moved it out of personnel to cover that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Christie, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that moving that money will cover that contractor for the rest of this fiscal year.
That is correct. That should be the balance for the rest of the year.
Good deal, thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter, on item O, this is the Capital Project 1024. It, it mentions in there, basically, the work has been completed, there's a release involved. It's exclusive of the reimbursement for a final payout. They have $270,000. And granting the U.S. Department of Treasury a 57.55% federal interest in the improvements, blah, blah, blah. And I've never seen that before, and that, I'm trying to figure out what that means.
Yeah, that, that's part of the, when they say strings are attached to certain grants, that, you know, apparently, the treasury is part of going through this process, that they have a 50% interest in the floating docks. They're, they're not, they agree, we can have the income from it, but if the, you know, I guess, we'd be prevented from selling the docks off in the middle of the night and not giving them their percentage of it.
And I can't remember what the grant source was here, but basically, it was federal, there were federal funds involved, right?
Restore.
Restore, okay.
They're probably doing this for everybody else that was so fortunate to get that grant.
Right, that's a string that's attached to this, this federal money that's coming this way, thank you. And on item R, payment processing agreement for a credit card. I have to ask the question, since we rescinded the other one. This one, this new company is able to charge all credit card processing fees to the customer, since that was required by law in the previous, contractor couldn't meet that term, but I just wanted to be sure this company can. Okay, thank you. You don't need to come up, we'll just, we'll ask Christie to, no, we won't. All right, that's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Right, okay, so, yeah, we do. And then we'll ask for exceptions, all right. Give me a break. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, the consent agenda is presented as, as presented. It's a 4-0 vote, and now we'll look to exceptions. Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
None.
Mr. Guines?
Not at all.
All right, you done laughing? Okay. Mr. Shoemaker?
No exceptions.
And I have none. Thank you. All right, that brings us to code enforcement hearings.
Okay. I understand that we're having some problems with the camera. I do have pictures here that I can provide to-
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Creel, first of all, we'll open the case ARC 3, Family Dollar, 1961 Pops Ferry Road.
Yes, sir, this property's still in violation.
It's in violation. Can you just give us a blurb, Jerry, maybe?
This is just an overgrown lot behind Family Dollar. It's not trash and litter, just overgrowth.
Okay. Is anybody here representing Family Dollar at 1961 Pops Ferry Road that wishes to speak on this matter?
Is Family Dollar, are they still open? They're open there, right?
Oh, Pops Ferry Road? Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Can't we just go in and ask them to cut it?
We do that. When you're dealing with a headquarters in another state-
Gotcha.
-sometimes you don't get a quick response to it, and that's what, what's happened here.
All right, any other questions on this matter? This hearing is closed. That brings us to the next hearing. James Urtell, 13105 Riverland Drive.
We would ask for 60 days on that property. It's still in violation.
So move.
So there's a motion for 60 days by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
Yes, second it.
Second by Mr. Lawrence, any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor? That's a 60-day extension, then, for Mr. Urtell. That concludes that hearing. The next hearing is Collier-Fryerson Estate, 2111 Russwood Drive.
This property's still in violation. What this is, it's, because it's an estate, we believe the owner, of course, has passed away. The house is vacant, it's overgrown, and they have three inoperative cars in the driveway. So we would ask for approval.
All right. Anyone here associated with Collier-Fryerson Estate that wishes to speak on this matter? There being none, this hearing is closed. The next hearing is for Jacob Russell Hamm. The property is 174 Claiborne Street. Mr. Creel?
That case has been resolved.
All right, thank you. That brings us to item E, Hospitality Holding of Mississippi. That address is 2688 Beach Boulevard. Mr. Creel?
Yes, sir, this has to do with the swimming pool. Whenever we brought the case through before, the swimming pool was not addressed, so we're addressing the swimming pool now. Typically, what we do with the swimming pool is we'll have, get the contractor to pump all the water out, we'll fill it up with sand, and then we'll build a cover over it so that it's, doesn't become stagnant again. Now, the good thing about this property is that the council has already passed a resolution on the rest of the property, and under the State House Bill, we're allowed to go in six times per year for a 20, for two years. In other words, six times one year, and then six times another year, without having to come back to the council and get approval. What we have to do is go out there and just put up a sign, letting them know that we're coming back in. And if we don't hear from them, then we go ahead. Now, I talked with some of the neighbors out there, and, you know, we're not going to have the ability to go in and cut the grass every week, you know, but at least we have that opportunity under state law to go back in and at least keep it to a maintainable level. This property, we have been in contact with the financial, the lending institution on this. It is in foreclosure. They're trying to get that processed. And we also have been in talks with a developer that owns some adjacent property that has contacted the lending institution and wants to acquire this property as a part of a proposal he's going to be bringing forward later.
Shoemaker's just adjusting the jacket, and let's start the demolition. Get their attention real quick, just have it demolished. So what do we need to do to start that? This thing's in bad shape.
We'd have to bring it back to the city council for demolition. You know, you'd have to declare it a public nuisance, and then we could, we could take it down.
All right, well, I think that's what we need to do, because it is a public nuisance. It's not going to get any better, and they'll just, let's cut the grass six times, it's not going to do any good. So let's go at having it demolished.
Okay. We'll start the process to bring it back to the council, if that's the way the council-
Mr. Guines, any comments on this particular matter?
Yeah, the only thing I'm, I'm thinking of, how fast would the developer versus tearing it down? Because I know the process is going to take some time.
Well, this is a, this is a proven developer with us. He, he can't go in right now. It's kind of like when you buy property for taxes, you know, we have to notify that tax purchaser. And they say, look, we'd love to go in there and take care of it right now, but legally, we can't go in until the tax date mature. It's the same way with a foreclosure. This person is in communication with a lending institution, but he can't go on the property. But I would anticipate, to answer your question, that he would move immediately to secure the building, probably remove the storage building, which is a big part of the problem there, just move that off the property, since it's a problem, and would come before us. We've, we've already looked at some drawings for what he's proposing next door, and this is going to be a very nice development when they allow us to announce it.
And, and we got two weeks to go. Could you do, next meeting, a compare and contrast, which would be faster and which would be the best for the council?
Yeah, any time that we have to bring something back to the council for a demolition, I mean, we still have to go through due process, even if the property is in foreclosure. You have to follow those same steps, but we could bring it back as quick as the process.
Okay, yeah, and I'm asking for compare and contrast between going this way and going that way.
We can do that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker, any thoughts or comments?
Just one question. Due process still takes many, many months, correct?
Not many months, but we, we still have to follow the same process we do with any other demolition. We have to send the letters out, we have to advertise in the paper, we have to do all those things. And then, anytime we take a building down, it's not, if we're just cutting grass, we gather the contractors in our office after the council passes the resolution and the adjudication. We get bids from them, and then we can turn them loose. But when you're talking about demolition, that has to go through the purchasing agent who has to advertise for 30 days. It's just a different process, it takes a little more time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Creel. That's all I have.
Yeah, Jerry, I would prefer that, that we move forward on the demolition process, as Mr. Lawrence suggested. And the reason is, quite honestly, I know I've been stopping by periodically as Arlene Wall and I became good friends, better friends, and have been monitoring that, and I know Mr. Markovitz has spent a lot of time, you know, sending me, so I don't, it does, if the adjacent property owner wants to do something with that property, that's terrific. I doubt if he's going to leave the current structure there. So it's just a matter of, if that building's going to come down, who's going to pay for it? We could wait forever for that developer next door, so I'd prefer to go ahead and start the demolition process.
Okay.
That might speed everybody along. I appreciate Mr. Guine's suggestion. You might be able to give us the pros and cons when we next meet, which is two weeks from now. But I'd like for us to move forward and do all the advertising that's required. I'm sure you've got to notify the lending institution. I don't know if there are issues that arise there, but I just want to put all the pressure we can to get this current structure gone, quite honestly. And, and the pool filled, or whatever, just because these good people, and they are good people, have been putting up with this for two years. Chief, that was a sight of homicide. How long, do you recall? It's a pop test. Do you recall how long ago this occurred?
I'm going to guess it was about three years.
Right, and, and ever since then, everything stopped, and I've noticed that the building was secured on a couple of occasions, and then it's no longer secure. And these, you know, the residents of Beauview, A, they have to look at it, but B, they have better things to do with their time. So having said all that, I'd just like move forward with all due speed to demolish this thing, and if, if somebody buys it before it's demolished, great. Saved in the nick of time for something, but I appreciate that. All right, anybody here to speak on this matter? Hospitality Holding, 2688 Beach Boulevard. There being nobody, this hearing is closed. We'll move on to the next hearing. Robert and Susan King, 395 Rodenberg Avenue.
That case has been resolved.
All right. The next item is item- The next item is item G, Annie Mebor and Lena Palmer for a lot on Keller Avenue.
Let me just point out that that property, item G, item H, and item J are all, uh, properties adjacent to each other, all owned by the same family. And I would ask for 60 days on that.
All right, so that's 60 days on item, can we, I think we'll do all these at once. On item G, H, and?
J.
J. G, H, and J. So there's a motion for 60 days by Mr. Guines.
Second.
A second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a four oh vote for the clerk. So that, that closes the hearing for item G, item H, and item J. That brings us to item I, State of Mississippi. The property is 361 Sherry Lane.
This is a vacant lot, it's still in violation, it's just overgrown.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? 361 Sherry Lane. There being nobody, this hearing is closed. That brings us to item K, the U.S. Small Business Administration for the property at 343 Hayes Street.
This property's still in violation. This is a house, and the, the house seems to be in good shape. But it's overgrown all the way around, the house is vacant.
I'd ask you a question. You have one with the State of Mississippi, now you got one with the small business. So we go around and we're gonna cut all this grass. Who are we claiming the money against?
Well...
If you're paying those, that's for sure, neither one of them.
But what we do, what we do is whenever we spend money to clean up a property, it's applied to the taxes. And whoever pays the taxes on the property, when they pay their tax bill, they have to satisfy any special assessments that are on there at the same time. We actually got that law changed. We worked with a state representative several years ago and explained to them the problems we were having, having to budget new money every year. And, uh, they were able to get it approved through the legislature. But when you go in to pay taxes now, if there's a special assessment, it has to be satisfied. They write one check.
I understand, but, uh, these two people, they don't pay taxes.
Well, whoever redeems the property...
They don't pay taxes. Paul Booth ain't paying taxes.
What we've, what we've done with the State of Mississippi in the past, though, if we've had to clean it up several times, we, we show them what we've paid and we show them the bill. And they've transferred the property to us, and then we have sold the property. I mean, that's our Secretary of State. They're, they're supposed to allocate money to reimburse us for this cleanup. But then the legislature never gives them any money. So we go, okay, we want to get reimbursed under this statute. They say, well, there's no money in there. But once we've built up about a thousand dollars of cleanup, we put a demand on them and they've transferred the property to us.
And the small business is the same way?
I don't know about them, but...
Because that's the other one, is the small business. So you're dealing with, you're not receiving nothing other than, like you said, you get lucky enough to get the land back. But nobody paying you a penny. And I know, I agree, you gotta clean it up, but...
My, my guess is on this one, this house looks, looks, I mean, this is, house is structurally sound. It's a nice house. My guess would be, is it, uh, it will probably sell whenever the, uh, Small Business Administration gets through their processing. It'll sell and whoever redeems it would be responsible for paying the taxes on it, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, anybody here to speak on this matter? 343 Hayes Street. There being nobody, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the next item. ET Properties LLC at 1891 Pops Ferry Road, lots 138 and 156.
We would ask for 60 days on this, they are working on it.
So I move ahead.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item M, Martha Walker, 362 Bowen Street.
That case has been resolved.
Item N, Darla Jean Hansen, 8392 Boss Hustley Road. Jerry?
That property's still in violation. I believe Mr. Shoemaker wanted to ask for 30 days on it, which we have no problem with that.
Mr. Shoemaker, is that, do you want a 30?
Yeah, if we could, I've spoken with Ms. Hansen multiple times.
Okay.
She has assured me that it'll be cleaned up in the next 30 days.
All right, so there's a motion for a 30-day extension by Mr. Shoemaker. And then a second by Mr. Guines. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you, this matter's closed. That brings us to Casaluna Acquisitions, 312 Santini Street.
This property's still in violation. It's got some, some trees on it, which we do not remove the trees. All we do is cut the undergrowth underneath. And it's just an overgrown lot that happens to have trees on it.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Is anybody here to speak on the matter of 312 Santini Street? There being, there being no one, this matter, this case is closed. That brings us to the routine agenda. Is there a motion?
I move it.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines.
I hope you got a lot of checks in that book.
Good evening, Council. As of today, we have 421.2,000 is in step four or five with Mema. It's been in there for eight days. That's the, uh, finance voucher portion of their payment to us. So we should have those funds to us, uh, within the next four or five days.
I didn't think I was buying that.
No, sir, not at this time. We need to make the next payment on our contractor, Nikke's Brothers Construction Company. And then we'll have funds after that point.
Thank you. Anything else on the routine agenda?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor, the routine agenda is presented. And for the clerk, that's a four oh vote. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lawrence. A second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? It's a four oh vote. Thank you, everybody have a safe Fourth of July. Our next council meeting is July 16th.